She came to the rescue. She was sometimes saying, you know that little thing's got a magnifying glass with a fluffing in it? That's like, oh yeah.
I had the other ones in my closet that you brought me.
Okay, are you ready? Good evening. I'm told six oh one. This is the September fourth, twenty twenty four Newry Planning Board meeting. First on the agenda is determined attendance and determination of form. We have two members present, two alternatives, alternates present, so we've got a forum.
I have all three members present.
Yeah. I have the sense too, I'm here. Sorry about that. Uh, number two, voting eligibility. All five of us were here at the last meeting, so we're all equal to vote at this meeting. And number three is election of officers.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and to relocate election of officers down to between item six and seven in order to be able to expedite our applicant's business.
Yeah, that's a motion.
I made a motion.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. We move item three to between item six and seven. All those in favor?
One, two, three, done.
Number four, minutes of prior meeting.
Shall we make the motion to set the minutes as written?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. If we accept the minutes as written, all those in favor?
One, two, three, done.
Oh, business. Business A, application number twenty-four two eight, the clients of Sunday River, Sunday River Pine Group LLC. Agent is mainland development, Bob Barry. Hi Bob.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Final plan review.
Well, I believe all the approvals happened last time, and we're here to sign plans with our draw. At your pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
You don't want to joke at once.
What?
You don't want to joke at once.
Is it easier for him just to roll them on a small table and you come to him, please?
Yep.
I've got a black pen. Oh, awesome. Good. You want to keep the part, go with the registry habits.
Well, fill in our middle later. Three copies of the plan.
So, um, if it's okay, I'll pause the tape on you guys signing the plans.
Totally.
I'd love to see you.
There you go.
Oh, let's see. Day of date now. The four and four.
Okay, good. Oh, good, good, good. Yeah, that was the one. Yes, I'll learn it again then, yeah. Okay, good. Okay. And I also contacted them to, they're coming up to do a very special.
We're not so big, but then.
Well, it's funny you say that, but it was a matter of, did there ever measure pressure or some type of pressure in the air that night, Chris? We, we could, we had a smug smell of Jimmy before too. There was like, is it just like down with Jimmy because of the way the air was coming out?
I thought you were only sixty-eight.
Well, at least something on.
Yep.
My technique wanted seven years. I never had a, kind of a great career in my experience.
Are you guys all done signing?
Yes. Okay, Bob, we've signed them all. One of those to registry, one's face here and.
How many stay here?
One stays here.
Just one. Well, I can get everything else I ever need off the registry anywhere.
Okay.
We have a question for the board, that's all right. The next meeting is the signing of the finding of fact, is that what?
Well, it probably decided, um, the review loans and votes to accept them.
Okay.
And then I will send them to the address that's in your application along with the letters and we get that all.
I guess my question is, we don't need to be here.
No, I asked Bob to ask that question. I was going to speak for the board. No, it's actually, um, for me, it's better than not because I record in the finding of fact. It records every meeting that you guys attend and present to this application. So that's why I put it, have it ready for tonight, just in case more discussion was done or motions were made, which are still in progress.
Thank you.
Angela, they know that the check's here for the third finding of fact.
Yeah, Becky's got that for the permanent.
Right, that's been paid. Thank you for all your time.
Thank you.
I have.
They're very with us, we appreciate it.
I have got a bird back from Steve from that email, just so.
Could you scan that and send it to, uh?
No, I'm set.
We'll do it out there. Thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Your honor.
Thank you.
See ya.
Good to see you.
Oh, it's sort of broken. Nothing exciting?
Is that all? I can't know anyway. I, my first priority is Newry, and I'm here. So I'm less able to spark the fire than I do dance.
Are you recording it?
Yeah, I started shooting there.
Okay.
Do you want this for your permanent record for now, and then you'll give it back to me to put in the file? Is this exactly what? It's exactly the same, just that I have it here. Yes, I have what I need. Okay. Very good. I'll put it in the file.
We're ready to be. Doing this, item B, Jordan Bathroom Building is in the Jordan Ski Lips Basin area, map article zero forty-six.
You can tell I don't ski, because I'm not quite sure what to call that area, but I think I covered it.
Yep.
Good.
Good.
Um, Peter Roberts here on behalf of Sunday River Skiway Corporation, uh, going to check to the permanent for Joel.
Thank you.
Um, sent a copy of our application by email and also paper copies. Um, so seeking questions, comments, um, whatever comes next on your agenda. Do we have a checkoff list or?
Um, do you have? Joel has started it?
I don't need a gun, man. The chair needs to make sure.
Okay, let's see. Type of review is a site plan. Okay, does the planning board have jurisdiction?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion, whereas the applicant, Sunday River Skiway Incorporated, operates a recreational area for commercial purposes. And whereas the applicant is proposing a, or deconstruction of a new structure within the recreational area. Therefore, by section one C two of the Unified Development Review Ordinance for the town of Newry. Make the motion that the planning board has jurisdiction.
I'll second that. They moved and seconded that the planning board has jurisdiction of this application. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
Let's see. Has the applicant provided proof of ownership? Deed versus sale or on per lease?
Mr. Chairman, whereas the applicant holds a lease for the land in question, as recorded with the Oxford County Registry of Deeds, book one zero nine five, page one one four. I motion that the applicant, Sunday River Skiway Incorporated, has adequately demonstrated proof of ownership.
I'll second that motion.
They moved and seconded that the applicant has proof of ownership. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
Does the agent have a letter of authorization to represent property owner?
Mr. Chairman, whereas the planning board has received a letter dated September eighth, twenty twenty-two, from one Dana Bullen, President of Sunday River Skiway Incorporated, in which agency is given to Peter Roberts to represent Sunday River Skiway before the board in all matters dealing with site plan applications. I motion that Peter Roberts is authorized to represent the applicant.
I'll second that motion.
They moved and seconded that the applicant has authorization to represent the property owner. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
Uh, does any board members have any bias or conflict of interest?
I do not.
I do not.
For the record, I am an employee of the Sunday River Skiway Incorporated in the capacity of a shuttle bus driver and not a member of the management team, nor in a position with management to be affected by or to affect any process brought to the board's board.
I make motion that board members do not have any bias or conflict of interest.
So, do we need to review the all minutes first or no?
Well, I suppose we could.
I also am a employee of Sunday River with the title of Vice President of Lodging.
And do you have any?
I have no connection to this.
Okay.
Thankfully. Sorry. Don't put that on there. I'm not going to bet if it's going to.
Ralph?
I have absolutely nothing to do with Sunday River. I am not a employee, I've not, never been an employee. I am not associated with them in any way.
Okay. I believe all board members do not have a conflict of interest. I made the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that all board members do not have bias or conflict of interest.
I second that.
And you seconded it. Okay. Uh, it's been moved and seconded that board members do not have bias or conflict of interest. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
Okay. Is any additional escrow needed?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the planning board does not need to obtain an outside engineering review of this application, and therefore there is no need for an escrow account.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that there is no need for additional escrow account. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
Allow applicant to explain their project.
Okay, um, I think most of this we covered in the pre-application meeting. Um, but what generally we're planning to do is put a six hundred square foot bathroom facility in the Jordan Basin area of the resort. Just barely, it doesn't have any public, public bathrooms that are typically available to the general guests. Uh, within probably a mile or so. It's also connected to food and beverage license for anybody who are planning to operate and will be coming in as a separate application.
And there'll be amen side, lady side, I assume?
Yep, the utility room, and we've got a small, um, ticket kiosk area out there. And sort of the building that will be pleased for, a place for people to diagnose any issues with their ski pass.
Okay. And are the food trucks connected to this at all?
Yeah, so adjacent to part of this application, we'll place a tube or a little magnitude, uh, pad of either gravel or concrete. There are a couple of food trucks, anyone who have permanent facility, we've got some food trucks, um, to alleviate some of the problems we've had with generators and, um, carrying sporting, small propane tanks in the past.
So they'll have electricity, they'll have water in, water out?
Um, I think they will still be filling that portable tank with a hose, but not having to walk nearly as far. And then wastewater out is typically the plan, although some will not set up for permanent wastewater connections. So we may end up having to carry a tank as well.
You're talking about the food truck?
Or the food trucks, not for the bathrooms.
And do they hook on the, these propane supply that you have?
Yeah, our plan is to place two stationary.
But, but, so you're talking about food trucks, right?
Yes.
But this is, this is the application.
But this is to do anything with food trucks?
I'm just wondering how many utilities we're going to have.
Well, I do show on the site plan, um, a pad for putting food trucks next to the bathroom building.
Yeah, I saw that.
As well as a new propane pad?
Yeah.
Rather large, with the looks of, what size tanks are you putting?
Um, certainly planning to start with two one thousand gallon tanks and then add a third if we need it. Um, because we won't be able to refill them. So whatever we have for propane when we fill up in the fall, it's going to be all the food trucks have for, for the season. So looking at feeding load.
So once the season starts rolling, there's no tired, real tired access to this location?
Yeah, that's true.
That was my question. Are the, are the, these are in the fall and out in the spring? So there's no motorized access on a regular basis in and out of there?
Do get towed in occasionally by snow cats, but.
Yeah, I think that's something we're trying to not to anymore.
What, waste the water from these food trucks?
Um, the food trucks, we are still determining whether or not we're going to have a hard piped connection to a septic tank or if the food truck operator will be taking the hail of gray water into dump into the mops sink and maybe.
Is that what they're doing now with the outback? Must be a lovely job.
Well, the, the food trucks don't have bathrooms, so all they have is gray water from, they're only from hand of dishwashing.
Maybe a little grease.
Did you say that?
Maybe a little grease.
Yeah.
Gray water?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that, uh, form ten point one, where application twenty-four dash two eighty-three is complete.
I'll second that motion. It's been moved and seconded that form ten point one is complete. All those in favor?
One, two, three. Mr. Chairman, whereas the applicant, the applicant's parcel that this project is located on is greater than one thousand five hundred acres, more or less. And the number of butters that would be required, as per the definition of our ordinance for notification is excessively high, especially in view of the fact that within a thousand feet of the site project or is, there are no butters. Uh, the applicant has requested a waiver from the submission requirement of a butter notification. And I'll make the motion that we grant that waiver.
I'll second that motion. They moved and seconded that we grant the applicant a waiver of butters to this parcel.
Butter notification.
Butter notification to this parcel, period. All those in favor?
One, two, three. Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that the, uh, having granted the waiver for a butter notification, the applicant's, the applicant has completed form ten point two.
Oh, second that motion. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the applicant has completed section ten point two. All those in favor?
Uh.
Up, up.
Uh, is the project located within a shoreline zone? They check yes.
No.
It is not.
It is not?
No.
That's because the yes and the no are flip flopped and somebody went automatically to the.
Well, I just want to make a note of that, that it is not internal.
Yeah, I'm sure Peter will correct that.
Oh, is that something that we can correct and ink or?
Yes.
I was wondering if Shirley in zone was, I think he'd tell us.
I'll just speak with my crew for you.
Yes.
Clearly their fault.
Darn the eye.
It is emotional before. But the applicant has completed form ten point two. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
Let's see, we talked about the food truck pad. There's some, not that the gray water is of, of an issue. And then we also talked about the propane, propane tank. I'm good with ten point three, anybody else good? Everybody else good with ten point? I don't know. Do you all have any?
Okay.
Is it in steamroll in here? I guess I should use up the.
But I appreciate the effort for speed.
Yeah, no, I don't see anything.
I will, I will put out the motion, Mr. Chairman, that form ten point three is complete.
I'll second that motion. It's been moved and seconded that form ten point three is complete. All those in favor?
One, two, three. Did you bring an additional waiver request for today?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if we needed to request a waiver for, um, from the requirement for a performance guarantee. So I prepared a letter to that effect. Um, and there was a discussion last time about the board not being able to waive performance guarantees. And I wasn't clear if it changed in the new ordinance or not.
There's a, there is a change in the ordinance. Where performance guarantees may not be waived for minor and major subdivisions.
Okay.
So, um, they infer that they may be waived if the applicant so requests or.
So I'll hand this out.
Site plan.
Read aloud for the record.
Thank you. Read this in the record yourself, please.
Yep.
Want to make a?
Thank you.
Uh, before is a letter from Sunday River dated four September twenty twenty-four. Read, Sunday River Skiway Corp, Jordan Basin Bathrooms. Dear Chairman, Sunday River Skiway Corp is requesting a waiver from the Newry U D R O Performance Guarantee Requirements. The proposed project is minor in nature and does not require construction of any civil infrastructure to serve any persons or entity other than the applicant. We believe that this waiver does not nullify intent or purpose of comprehensive plan or any ordinance including the U D R O. Sincerely, Peter Roberts, P E.
Mr. Chairman, the letter refers to section twenty-one of the ordinance titled Performance Guarantees. And in section A, uh, in the first paragraph, about the third sentence down. And let's see. The planning board shall not waive the requirement of a performance guarantee on an application for a subdivision, major or minor. The extra guarantee is not required to be tendered until five days prior or so. And so in that language, it infers that a waiver could be granted for a site plan application.
That's the interpretation.
And that is the secretary's interpretation.
I sort of agree with the secretary. Yeah, makes sense to me. Um, would the secretary like to make a motion on that?
Okay, it's, oh, I'm making all the other ones.
What, what?
Never mind. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, in view of the, of the applicant's request for waiver of a performance guarantee. And given that the project under review is relatively minor in nature and is not a subdivision, I therefore move that we accept or approve the waiver guarantee, uh, the waiver request.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman. It's been moved and seconded that in light of the, the, the project. It's not what I wanted to say, but, uh, that this waiver be granted. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
Okay.
With that being done, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that form ten point four is complete.
I'll second that motion. They moved and seconded that section or form ten point four is complete. All those in favor?
One, two, three. So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion.
He's not.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Um, that, uh, will a site plan be held for this project?
Site visit.
Site, I'm sorry. Will a site visit be held for this project? Um, I do not believe that a site visit with all the information that we have received, um, will be needed for this project.
I'll second that motion. It's been moved and seconded that a site visit will not be held for this project. All those in favor?
One, two, three. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion, um, on item next, it says, will a public hearing be held for this project? Due to the information that we received and the requirements that have been met above, that a public hearing will not be needed for this project.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded that a public hearing will not be needed for this project. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
Okay, so now we're down to, will the applicant meet the performance guarantee requirement?
That has already been resolved.
It's already been resolved.
Ten, ten, ten point four.
That's what I thought.
Yep. Check it off.
Okay. Are any waivers being requested by the applicant? I think we've already discussed that too.
Any waivers yet?
Okay.
If yes, each waiver must be voted on with a formal motion.
Well, I believe we've already voted on that.
You've already done that.
You've already done that, okay.
Yeah.
Are any conditions of approval being placed on this application?
As amazing as it might be, I have none.
I don't see any. It's a bathroom.
I have a lot.
What did you say?
Becky's going to buy a lottery ticket.
I want for me too. Um. So is that a motion? Did the motion require?
No, it doesn't. It says, if yes, each condition must be voted on with a formal motion, and there is no motion, so.
No conditions. No conditions? So just a check mark? Okay. The board proceeds to review all performance standards included in this application.
How would the board like to do this? We have 34 performance standards that we have to file through. Can we just look at them as a whole and emit one motion at the end, or do we need to, would the board prefer to have 34 separate motions?
I just assume both.
I think you can just go through and make motions on anything that applies, but anything that doesn't apply.
Uh, Becky, what do you think of if we take Form 10.5 and pin it into the planning board notes? And then, would that be what either add to the minutes or add to the application file?
Yeah.
You're approving that? Okay, so this is 24, 23.
If there's anything that does apply, I think you'd have to make a motion.
Yes, yeah.
What did you declare that?
In 10.5.
The maintenance standard made, oh, I'm sorry. I'm hoping everyone's got one. It's just that Ted had made up a line there. I won't write on it, I'll just hand it.
For the record, we're reviewing, uh, Section 13 Performance Standards of the Uniform Development Review Act. The first performance standard, which is Section A, is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. I will make the motion that the site, the applicant, or the application is centered around an already existing recreation area, which is central to our comprehensive plan, and therefore, uh, the applicant is in conformance with the comprehensive plan.
That was a motion.
That was a motion.
I'll second that motion. It's been moved and seconded that this application covers a project that is in conformance with our comprehensive plan. That's correct. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
Municipal services.
Mr. Chairman, I, do municipal services are not applicable?
I believe you're correct. Preservation and enhancement of the landscape.
Preservation and enhancements of the landscape have been reviewed extensively in previous applications, primarily, uh, the Jordan Lift most recently. And there was no issues with that, and this is well within that umbrella.
Okay.
Uh, I would make the motion that it is in conformance with preservation and enhancement of the landscape.
I'll second that motion. It's been moved and seconded that this is in conformance with the preservation and enhancement of the landscape. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
Relation of proposed dwellings and buildings to the environment. Hmm.
It's, it's a low aspect building.
Yeah.
Uh, it's not readily visible from any vantage point other than.
As compared to the lift, it's really not too far from it.
Right.
Can hardly see it.
And the only people that will be able to see it apart are the ones who want to use it. And then there's the diversion of the food truck mission, so, yeah. I would say that we were in compliance with the, the proposed building to the environment.
I'll second that.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded that these buildings are in compliance? Is that the right word? Maybe there's a, the proposed buildings.
That they meet the performance standard for.
Okay, they meet the performance standards of relationship to proposed dwellings, to proposed buildings to the environment. All those in favor?
One, two.
Three. Land not suitable for building. Maybe suitable. Well, according to this map number two or three, not showing any weapons.
The line is well, well above normal high water mark for any water body.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't see any water bodies.
And it's a long way from the 100-year flood plain.
Ooh, yes.
And other than, the whole area is a lease. It's not part of a permanent road right-of-way or permanent road easement. And there's no, there's been no fill-in of a, or drainage of a pond or wetman. Nor has, from previous reviews, primarily the Jordan Lift review that was conducted two years ago, a, any significant wildlife habitat or marine or main department. Let me rephrase that. There's been no cited significant wildlife habitat.
Words of that effect.
So I would say it's in compliance.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded that it's compliant with the thought that land not suitable for building is.
Is met.
Is met? How's that sound?
Well, as good as my moment.
Yeah. One, two, three. I mean, all those in favor?
Two, three. Topsoil and vegetation removal. Peter, um, looking at your map number two or three. Are there any trees in this area to start with?
The building, no, but there's a few trees that need to get cleared for the propane pad.
But they're often a little bit of that cultivation, too, right?
Yeah, they're.
Like a couple of feet, something, whatever. Right, it looks from the drawing that you're building up a little bit here.
Yeah, what we want to do is match the sill height of the building to the finished floor of the igloo, so when you're walking down, when you're walking on ice to the bathroom here, on a level surface, and not trying to, like, navigate down some slope.
You prefer to this, you, or what is it?
It's a huge igloo made out of ice. I can check pictures if you want. I think that inside, there's, there are four chambers inside of it. The main chamber, I think, is thirty, ten, it's 10 meters wide by eight meters tall, I think, so it's pretty significant size. It's a parabolic arch, so it creates a really interesting, um, acoustic cavity, too. You'd like to keep it over, kind of thing. Um, but basically, it's created by, um, blowing snow with a snow blower onto a balloon that holds the form of the interior. Um, and then after the snow has solidified for a couple of days, the balloon gets deflated and pulled out.
You're not gonna cut blocks and stack them?
Yeah.
Wow. And this is a temporary structure and gets built in the same place the next year?
Yeah, uh, but I think as Joel pointed out last time when we were here for the pre-act, um, that her further review of the U.D.R.O. would require a site development permit for that temporary structure, um, so it's something we're planning to get a permit for in the next couple of coming meetings.
So this, this hasn't been built yet?
It, no.
It was, it, there was one, milk last year, uh, there was an administrative error in that the belief that it being a temporary building, a site plan application was not required. If we review the definition of a structure in the U.D.R.O., it includes temporary structures. And therefore, Sunday River will be coming before the board later to get that, do that application.
Okay.
And I think your hope is that you can get one that is interpretative.
Yeah, so the guy, the other guy that's working with me named Carson, uh, is trying to find a, hopefully not too complex. So we're looking for.
Convolvated?
Uh, convolvated or oppositional, uh, an application for the, come before the board and present his own. Um, so I think he's gonna be the one that does that, but yeah, I think he is scheduled for a pre-application on the 18th, and then will come in October and present the final application.
So it's, at this time, there's no sense complicating this application with that?
Uh, no, I think next week, um, I'll be here in the audience and whatever information, you know, if you guys need further information on how these things are put together or anything like that, that would be a good time to.
I'm curious.
Yeah. Be a good time to talk about, you know, bringing pictures or any sort of.
For right now, it's just a, it was just a distractor that we shouldn't really spend a lot of time on, so we can get, get along with this.
Okay.
But there, how much, how much fill are you bringing in?
200 yards, I think, per square.
It looked like you were gonna raise it like five feet or six feet.
How many cubic yards?
I believe it's 200 cubic yards. I'll have to look back.
And is it gonna be, do you have a frost wall on this, or is it just gonna be a berm on the end?
Yeah, it's, uh, frost walls, kind of flat on the tree.
Okay, so a fourth foot, frost wall, is it?
Okay, back to F.
Back to F.
Back to F. Topsoil and vegetation removal. Not a lot of vegetation removal. And.
I can make a statement, um, the topsoil that gets removed from the site usually gets screened and then reapplied to the fill extensions after we're done, so it is removed and then reapplied. It doesn't remove the site.
Okay.
I think, I think the applicant will be meeting, will meet the performance requirements for topsoil and vegetation removal.
That was a motion?
I'll make the motion that the applicant has demonstrated compliance with topsoil and vegetation removal for performance statement.
I'll second that motion. It's been moved and seconded that the applicant has demonstrated the topsoil and vegetation removal. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
Before we go on, can I ask a question about it? Because it's about removal, is the bringing in fill even affected by the U.D.R.A.?
Uh, you mean like the 200 yard, cubic yards, they're gonna bring in?
Are you talking about bringing in the fill per, for making the path?
Uh, not on Section F, but if you go to, uh, the, the, to, where it says about contours.
Okay, so.
Agricultural.
So it's the only way it matters that really affects the lay of land?
Yeah, there is a, there is a, uh, I think we haven't gotten there yet, the performance standards where we significantly do not want to change the topography of the area.
Yeah, I do remember that one. I was just asking you, this one, because it feels like it's not in the big scope of things.
That's under J, site conditions, number three.
Yeah, I don't remember if it's in the U.D.R.O. or just in state law, but there are laws in place about stripping topsoil to use in other places, so I know the D.E.P. regulates, like, you can't buy farmland, strip all the topsoil off, and truck it away, and not re-vegetate with anything.
And, and the U.D.R.O. under Section J site conditions, align that line, doesn't want the development to significantly change the topography by either adding or removing vast quantities of. But it, yeah, that, it probably stems from your initial comment there. All right, erosion incentive control, uh, the applicant has submitted an erosion incentive control plan, which is, uh, drawing number three. And I'll take the opportunity there, Peter, to point out my pet peeve. If you look at, uh, you can do, number, item number seven, under, uh, A.D.E.P. Chapter 500 Housekeeping Standards. 7A. Specifically talks about concrete washout, stucco paint. So if you would make sure that you have a proper washout facility for your.
Yeah, I added a separate note on the cover sheet about that, because I know we talked about this last time, the, the, on the EC plan, I could probably just remove it for town applications with the state, with our state. I don't know if inspector's the right word, but the person that would, uh, review our state applications asked that the direct language out of Chapter 500 Housekeeping Standards be copied and based on all the drawings. Um, and so I know you had asked for elaboration on that, so the cover sheet should have a note that we had worked out in the last application.
I just know how easy it is to wash out the nearest side, roadside. Couple bales of hay and some landscaping plot would go a long way. So I'll make the motion that the applicant has demonstrated that they will meet the standards for erosion incentive control. I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that the applicant has met the criteria for erosion incentive control. All those in favor?
One, two.
Three. Stormwater management.
Uh, I believe the applicant has stated that, uh, the stormwater management system that was put in place for the Jordan Lift, probably done two years ago, will cover this area, is that correct, as ever you said?
Yeah, I reviewed, um, at the request of the board, just a water plan in terms of for the Jordan Lift, to make sure that this isn't going to interfere with anything or not. And I don't see anything that would be a conflict.
Now, that whole meadow there, Peter, is, uh, it, would I be incorrect in saying it acts as a detention pond for water coming down from Sayla, Apalooza, or Moigangel, or?
Um, there's, so the bottom of Safe Air, um, ski trail, um, there's a catch basin in front, in the portal, which it would take water and bring it to the north of where this building's going.
Okay.
And then on the, where Firestar comes in, the whole, I guess it would be south into that meadow, there's a huge berm across that captures all the little runoff fingerling streams that come out of the woods and direct them across to the bottom of Firestar.
That leaves all of Apalooza.
There is not, there wasn't anything in the permit for the Jordan A-lift that affected all of Apalooza.
You did, and, but the, your plan for that project shows. You did, and, but the, your plan for that project shows a water flow coming down Lala Palooza, going into that meadow area.
Was it Jordan project?
Yes. There is, you had a, well, I can't remember exactly what it is, but it was showing the water flows coming down the different ski trails, and it showed a water flow coming down Lala Palooza towards the, towards that meadow, and so it looks to me like that meadow was a, is acting as a natural retention, not, not in this here.
Most of the, um, there's a five-foot diameter culvert at the bottom of the steep section of Molapalooza coming out of the tunnel where it flattens out. Um, and that captures all the water that comes down through blind ambition and puts it underneath the ski trail. And then the, from that flatter section at the bottom, where the service road comes out on Molapalooza, there's a ditch on the right-hand side of the service road as you drive out onto the trail, and so all the sheet flow from the bottom of X Malver and Molapalooza end up in that roadside ditch, and there's a culvert that brings it over to the road.
That, you're, you're saying sheet flow, that doesn't imply any retention?
There's a, there's a detention pond, um, the state requires buffering of all the water that comes off the roof. Eight thousand, it's eight thousand square foot, flat roof. So on a hot day, they don't want the water hit the hot roof, warm up to ninety degrees and it runs into the roof, so there's a detention pond that is specifically for capturing room for, that we built as part of that project.
Back to my original question, does that meadow retain rainwater for, and slowly release it into Merle's work or not?
Not as part of any permit, no.
But does it do it in a natural course?
To a certain extent, it probably does, yeah.
And... So, are, well, it's, you're building up. What would be the impact of this building on, on that?
Um, we opted to put a culvert through the, so, fill extension, because the way the building's created kind of retains water on the, kind of, northwestern side of the building. One of the issues, so we ran into, in the spring, somebody, last fall, drove a Opera forklift through the, um, the Burdian berm that I was talking about. Um, so all that water coming out of the woods, uh, instead of going across in the drainage channel where it's supposed to go, ended up coming down through the site where this building's going. Um, so in the event of that happening again, the culvert's there, um, to allow water to just flow by and so.
That's the one that's on the drawing?
Yep.
The one that's going in?
I'm happy. All of the covered faces on it. I make a motion that the applicant has demonstrated quite good knowledge about stormwater management. Yep?
Yep.
Yep, okay, I'll second. The move and second that the applicant has showed good knowledge of stormwater management, which is, is part of the world, all those in favor?
One, two, three.
Borrow pits.
Not applicable.
Not applicable. Site conditions. Let's see, this site is naked of trees, right?
This, uh, Joel, is this more of an enforcement issue or?
I believe this is an enforcement issue, I don't.
I would say that this, for review, it's not applicable.
Okay. Okay.
You're talking about the site conditions? Correct.
Okay, plumbing. Is that an enforcement issue also?
That comes down to the L P I, yep.
Okay. Water supply. The water supply is coming off existing existing systems, is that the correct term?
It is a public water system existing out there.
Too much water line comes down.
I don't think enough. And it's a registered public water supply.
Yep.
Okay. I make a motion that the water supply is more than adequate and more than safe for this application.
Means the performance standard.
There you go, that's the right word to use, sir.
Okay, what was the word again?
Means the performance.
Means the performance standard, okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's the move and second that the water supply meets the performance standard, all those in favor?
One, two.
Three. Utilities.
You gonna have any lighting out there?
Hello? Talking about a solar lighting in the building?
Yep.
Yeah, the, our electrician told us, um, national electrical code requires a light fixture at each exterior door of a public building. So I wrote very, a quick blurb in one of the, um, sections of the application about, uh, typically what I've used is a, is a manufacturer's R A B, but it's a downward facing wall pack that's black and it's got like a, either an L E D or a halogen light in it.
You're not doing any floodlights or anything? Just so I can get out of the bathroom safely?
Yeah.
Get back to, get back to the.
Only get trapped in there to blackout.
And all the, all the utilities are all underground, correct?
Yes.
I'll make the motion that the applicant has demonstrated performance with section M utilities of the performance standards. Second that motion.
It's the move and second that the applicant has met the performance standards for utilities for this project, all those in favor?
One, two.
Three. Sign standards.
Not applicable.
Not applicable, okay. Oh, lighting standards.
Did we just talk about that?
I think we just talked about that, okay. P, dust, fumes, vapors, gases.
Would you have made a motion on the lighting standards? I would make a motion that the lighting standards have met the performance standard for sublocation.
Okay, I'll second that. Is the move and second that, oh, lighting standards, has been met, all those in favor?
One, two.
Three. P, dust, fumes, vapors, gases, odors, glare, explosive materials, I would make a motion that that is not applicable.
Anybody agree with that? He agreed with it.
He agreed with it, you second it. Okay. Uh, Q is reserved, R is refuse disposal.
You gonna vote on it? We gonna vote on it?
We haven't been voting on none of that.
We haven't been studying on those.
Okay.
Refuse disposal. I believe the applicant has said that they are going to use a private company to dispose of all the refuse.
So it's two different, I guess, that's a refuse, one being construction debris, the second being solid waste from operation of the building. We have a, a, our roll-off can that we keep on place from, uh, Casella. And so, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of volume of construction debris, so we put in pickup trucks and bring it to that can, which is in lot nine, appropriate mix of the store. Um, and then we lease, um, dumpsters from Casella that stay at the end of the service road, probably two hundred yards from the site. And then the tri-town waste agreement pays for the tipping of those through our tax dollars.
And what about, like, paper, you having paper towels, you just using air blowers?
That's what he was just talking about.
Yeah, you start, start with paper towels and see what goes.
Now, I'll make the motion that the applicant is, has demonstrated performance with the refuse disposal performance requirement. I'll second.
It's the move and second that the applicant has met the performance standards for refuse disposal, all those in favor?
One, two.
Three. Protection of significant fisheries and wildlife habitat. Doesn't appear to be any fisheries.
No salamanders or owls?
Three-legged frogs.
I don't think this is applicable.
Okay. T, scenic locations. Let's see, this is at the bottom of the, right?
Hasn't had any complaints from Merle Hill, who was in the tour?
I make a motion that T, scenic locations, is not applicable.
Okay, I'd go with that.
Move and second that T, scenic locations is not applicable, all those in favor?
Doesn't, yeah, that doesn't need a vote.
We're not voting on that either.
Okay, sorry about that.
Archaeological sites is not applicable, because it's already been covered by, it's an existing recreation area that's been reviewed. Same with historic areas, same with agricultural protection buffer strips. Behavioral and pedestrian traffic, I don't say anything about ski traffic.
I think that's already covered.
I would say all of those, so, uh, T, U, V, W, and X are not applicable.
Okay. Groundwater protection.
So if I could make a statement, um, we're not doing subsurface wastewater disposal, we're not storing or handling any chemicals in significant volume that would affect the quality of groundwater.
It's a relatively small project.
And everything's got to opt for a suit, shake a flag.
There's no, there's no offer firm underneath this property?
Not on the state's map.
Yeah, it's not on our schedule.
I make a motion that Y, groundwater protection, has been met.
I'll second.
The move and second that Y, groundwater protection has been met, all those in favor?
One, two.
Three. Z, noise. So you're using paper towels, not blowers, there's not a lot of noise.
I'll push it once. I don't think that's applicable.
I think it's not applicable.
Three.
Uh, buffers and screening standards. If you have a public bathroom, you probably want it to be not particularly well-screened, you want it to be able to find the dark thing. Is that a good thought or a bad thought?
I don't think there were any requests for, um, buffers or, or, uh, vegetated screens.
No, can I stand Joel up for him? I wanna make a motion that A, A, buffers and screen standards, screen standards meets the, uh, performance standard. I'll second.
The move and second that A, A, buffers and screens have been met, all those in favor?
One, two.
Three.
Section A B, home occupation doesn't apply, section A C, life safety and supir- prior suppression applies to subdivisions, and therefore that does not apply. Commercial energy facilities?
Does not apply.
Not apply.
Mineral exploration or extraction does not apply. Wireless communication, telecommunications facilities does not apply. A G, solar energy systems does not apply. And H, recreational lodging facilities does not apply.
Mr. Chairman, having reviewed all thirty-four performance standards outlined in section thirteen of the ordinance, and having done separate, oh, the board has, let me rephrase that. Having reviewed all thirty-four performance standards as outlined in section thirteen of the ordinance, having found no issues with any of them, I will make an overall motion that the applicant is in compliance with the performance standards of the ordinance. I'll second that motion.
It's the move and second that the applicant is in compliance with the performance standard for, 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 for section thirteen of U D R O, all those in favor?
One, two.
Three. All right, what's next?
Chapter five, page twenty-one.
This is section five, page twenty-one, there's. You flipped a lot of pages, eh?
Yeah, I know. Here we go.
There we go. Are we ready?
I'll ever be.
Okay. Our fair approval, A, pollution. The proposed development will not result in undue water or air pollution. In making this determination, it shall at least consider the elevation of the land above sea level, its relation to floodplains, well above floodplains, well above sea level. The nature of soils and subsoils, their ability to adequately support waste disposal for the waste is being shipped off-site. Slot of the land and its effect on effluents. My.
There's no subsurface wastewater, so there's no effluent.
It's true. Sounds like we answered that and I wanna vote it. Ability of streams for disposal of effluents, see above. Applicable state and local health and water resource rules and regulations.
Been met.
Did you say Bruce?
They've been met.
They've been met. I make a motion that A, pollution, has been met.
I'll second.
It's the move and second that A, pollution, has been met, all those in favor?
One, two.
Three. These erosion, proposed development will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or the reduction of the land's capacity to hold water so that a dangerous, unhealthy condition results.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has submitted an erosion control plan as part of the application. Citing that submission, I make the motion that erosion has been, the erosion criteria approval has been met. I'll second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded that erosion has been met, all those in favor?
One, two.
Three. C, traffic. Proposed development will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions in respect for use of highways or public roads existing or proposed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that section C, traffic, for criteria approval does not apply to this application, I'll second that motion.
The move and second that section C, traffic, is not applicable, all those in favor?
One, two.
Three.
One, two, three.
B, sewage disposal. Proposed development will provide adequate sewage-based disposal and not cause unusable burden on municipal services if they are utilized.
Mr. Chairman, whereas the applicant will be using their private sewage treatment facility, which is already in existence and has adequate capacity for this project, I make the motion that criteria of approval for sewage disposal has been met. Second that motion.
The move is second that B, sewage disposal, has been met. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
E, municipal solid waste disposal. Proposed development will not cause an unreasonable burden on the town's ability to dispose of solid waste.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that whereas the applicant will be contracting with private waste haulers to deal with their solid waste from this project, that criteria of approval, E, municipal solid waste disposal, has been met. I'll second that motion.
The move is second that municipal solid waste disposal has been met. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
F, aesthetic, cultural, and natural value. Proposed development will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat identified by the Department of Indian Fisheries and Wildlife or the town.
Chairman, whereas over a period of several decades, this recreational area of which this site will be part of has never been identified as having scenic or natural significance, wildlife habitat significance by the Department of Indian Fisheries and Wildlife or by any other municipal entity, I would make the motion that F, aesthetic, cultural, and natural values have been met or do not apply. I'll second that motion.
The move is second that aesthetic, cultural, and natural values do not apply. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
G, financial, technical, technical capacity. The applicant has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the standards of this ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the applicant has demonstrated sufficient financial and technical capacity to meet this requirement and criteria of approval.
I'll second that. The move is second that G, financial and technical capacity, has been met. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
H, sufficient water. The proposed development has sufficient water available for its reasonable, reasonably foreseeable needs.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that H, sufficient water, has been met through the already existing infrastructure for this proposed application.
It's been moved and seconded that sufficient water has been met. All those in favor?
As of the second.
Oh, I, I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded that sufficient water has been met. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
I, public water supply is not applicable. That surface waters. Oh, that's, oh.
The attorney likes motions on criteria of approval.
Oh, so it's not?
It's different than.
Just, just, they're border case. Okay, never mind. I will make the motion that public water supply is not applicable.
I'll second.
The move is second that public water supply is not applicable. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
J, surface waters. Whenever situated entirely or partially within the watershed of any pond or lake within two hundred fifty feet of a wetland, I make a motion that J, surface waters, is not applicable.
Second.
It's been seconded that J, surface waters, is not applicable. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
K, groundwater. Proposed development will not, alone or in conjunction with existing activities, adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater. Everybody's quiet.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that K, groundwater, will not, in alone or in conjunction with existing activity, adversely affect the quality of the groundwater. It's criteria of approval.
But this project will not adversely.
This project will not, yeah. Proposed development, yeah, whatever, this project.
It's been moved and seconded that K, groundwater. I'll second that.
What did you say?
Uh, it's been moved and seconded that groundwater has been met. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
Flood areas.
Mr. Chairman, the, the proposed application is not located within a federal emergency management agency flood boundary and floodway or flood insurance rate map, nor is it within the hundred-year flood elevation and flood hazard boundary, and therefore I would take the motion that flood areas do not apply. I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that L, flood areas, does not apply. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
Freshwater wetlands, M. All freshwater wetlands within the proposed development have been identified on any maps submitted as part of the application. I see no wetlands identified on the maps.
Motion? A motion?
I make a motion that M, freshwater wetlands, is not applicable. Up to this project.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that M, freshwater wetlands, are not applicable to this project. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
River, stream, or brook. Any river, stream, or brook within or flooding the proposed development has been identified on any maps submitted as part of the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that river, streams, or brooks, uh, within the budding of proposed development have been identified, uh, and for this project and meets the criteria.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded that N, river, stream, and brook has been identified, and source that.
It's, it's been identified for this project.
It's been identified for this project. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
Stormwater. Proposed development will provide for adequate stormwater management.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the, uh, the applicant has demonstrated stormwater management plan for this project. It meets the criteria.
I'll second that. The move is second that the applicant has demonstrated.
And then it meets the criteria for O, stormwater.
Okay, criteria for stormwater. Management. All those in favor?
One, two, three. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that subsection P, spaghetti lots prohibited, subsection Q, municipal services, subsection R, lake phosphorus concentration, subsection S, impact on adjoining municipalities, and subsection T, land subject to divination harvesting, is not applied to this application. I'll second that motion.
The move is second that sections P, Q, R, S, and T are not applicable to this application. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
Oh, let's see. Conformity with local ordinances and plans. Proposed development conforms with a duly adopted subdivision regulation or ordinance, comprehensive plan, development plan, or land use plan, if any. In making this determination, the planning board makes these ordinances and plans.
Is any board member aware of any ordinances that we have not covered tonight?
No, sir. Not yet.
I'll make the motion that having duly reviewed performance standards in section thirteen, criteria of approval requirements in section five, and that the application is in conformity with local ordinances and plans. I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that this application is in conformity with local ordinances and plans. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
Next check mark says, "The board moves with a formal motion to approve, approve the conditions or deny the application."
Mr. Chairman, having duly reviewed the application against the unified, unified development review ordinance, and having found it to be in compliance, and whereas no conditions of approval have been stipulated, I make the motion that the planning board approve application twenty-four dash two-eight-three Jordan Basin bathrooms. I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve application number twenty-four-two-eight-three bathroom building for Sunday River Ski Way. All those in favor?
One, two, three. How's that, Peter?
Thank you.
I don't know if you, Joe, I don't know if you beat Joe or not, but you're pretty close. Joe didn't, Joe didn't have to sit through, uh, performance standards.
Next one says, "The board confirms that each of the forms of the final application belongs to ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four on the side."
We have?
We have the master?
Yes, I think he has the master, yeah.
Okay. The board reviews the size, size of the final plans. Do we have those, or do you?
Be prepared to begin, boy.
Might have to move your bottom off. I do not have the black pen.
I'm pretty sure.
I do?
Yeah, the guys do.
So these numbers all ready to go this winter?
Yeah.
Alright, I gotta climb, I'll pop there and see them.
Use them?
Yeah. You wanna be there for the ribbon cutting ceremony?
Shall I file the report while you guys sign?
Sure.
Yeah.
That way our jokes won't get carried over.
Yeah, the carpentry contractor was very disappointed in the last year's, personally messing with the project.
Who you contracted for this?
Um, there's a general contractor in the Portland area that I've done a lot of work with, uh, called Le Hall Construction. Yeah, and they basically provide project management and find local subcontractors.
They're doing the MTL building.
Yeah. Yeah, the, um, vice president of commercial construction grew up in Shelburne and went to school, so he's.
Well, it's, it's, 'cause, 'cause our bound looked at them to revitalize their, to turn their, their boat shed into, or canoe barn into bathrooms. It was like a two-hundred thousand dollar project.
Let's do one more edit. When I run down the bike trails at mountain road.
Yeah, they're not cheap. Sometimes you get what you pay for, though, yeah, yeah.
Well, let me say, you know, the toilet.
Yeah, it just reminds.
Kill a mosquito with a floor zebra.
My favorite was Kansas. I got up there hiking, I was.
Oh, this, this is just three, right?
It'll grow back.
Have you run, have you ran the old Tower Line Mountain Bike Trail?
No.
Pretty crazy.
Is it, um, is it, can I find it easy enough? I was just looking at your mountain zoom.
It's challenging to find.
Oh, alright, well, maybe you could help me out and send me an email or a draw.
Maybe my wooden's out before this.
Okay.
Can I get everything camp all ready?
Peter, man, I can ask you a couple of general questions.
No, I don't know.
Is there any other project?
Do you want one copy or two?
I'll take it, I'll hold it.
So, general questions, yes?
The, um, the glades at Ridge Run.
Yep.
Is that still under declarant control?
No. The H, we took over that. Twenty nineteen or something.
Has the Sunday River transferred the roads to them?
Um, if I remember correctly, Sunday River owns the roads and the easement, there's an easement allowing the H.
Okay, so there's no, unlike some of the other subdivisions, you're not planning to, to turn the roads over to them?
True.
The, uh, that development in particular, uh, required a lot of rain gardens in the lots, which are doubtful whether they ever got constructed. And would it be a fair assessment to say that that's aggravating the, the stormwater running down the west branch of Parker Brook and therefore helping with the washout from the ski way route?
Without comparing any data, I'd say, from a qualitative perspective, yes.
Should've built a bridge. No, I, well, no, it's just, I, I'm just, it's, it's been, stormwater's become a very big, sure, big part of your life, the last year, and we have a lot of subdivisions that have taken, had a lot of provisions for things like this that never get put in, and therefore now we're paying the price.
Yeah.
I don't know if the, if the corp, if Sunday River's in any position to lean on having those rain gardens established?
Well, there's a couple of different approaches to subdivision, to meeting stormwater streams, there are some divisions. One is for the declarant slash applicant to build the stormwater infrastructure and then incorporate that into the price of the lot when it gets sold. And then the other way to do it is to, in theory, discount the lot and put the burden on the homeowner, um, which is how that subdivision was approached. Each of those owners signed that closing, an acknowledgement that they had read through all those requirements.
Sure they did.
Sure. Excruciating detail. I, I, were we to do another subdivision, maybe it'd be worth, like, taking a look at doing something differently.
Yeah, I would, that would be much, I think that would be called for.
I think that one, now that it's moved out of the declarant's control period, it's legally not a whole lot we can do, other than make some phone calls and remind people.
Now, what about Merle Hill? Are there any plans for paving the lower portion of Merle Hill?
Yep, it's been discussed quite a bit.
Is that the Savage piece?
Not just the layout.
Savage owns the lot, so they are not the.
They don't own, they don't own the, the infrastructure of the, of the roads.
Correct.
I think that's, there's been discussion between you and Dana, right?
Yeah.
And that's, uh, paving of those was a condition of approval, I believe.
Yes, yeah.
So the only, the only other issue that for future planning, um, the building footprint restrictions that DEP normally places on a lot are not being really observed by.
I think you mean the building envelope?
The building envelope. The building envelope.
The twenty thousand square foot.
And I know, again, once a developer sells a lot, it's out of your hands, although certainly any future developments that come our way from the skiway, we look at ways that we can augment insurance that those building envelopes are observed and not excessively clear.
The HOA has to submit a site plan to the Architectural Review Board, which in the declarates control period is Sunday River employees, and then that gets turned over to the homeowners association. And each of those site plans has to demonstrate tree clearing limits that conform to that requirement. And then if those are violated, that should be, um, the homeowners association dealing with that as a violation of the HOA covenants.
Well, there's some pretty obvious violations up on, on Merle Hill and whatnot. Is, are there any actions being taken on that?
I believe there were some.
I have two that are on a replant schedule. There are others that the homeowners association has not done anything with.
But that's still in the declarate review?
Correct.
The declarate control period, right?
Wrong word, correct, yeah.
So that's, so the skiway still has a lot of say in the HOA?
Yeah, and I don't want to make promises on behalf of Dana and Scott.
I understand that.
But I believe as an enforcement issue, if you see issues, then we have the power as the declarant to, you know, cite them for violating the, the covenants.
Unfortunately, with tree clearing, after the fact, enforcement is, is kind of, the damage has been done, so other, okay, appreciate your time.
Yeah, I think if, if we subdivide in the future, which probably will happen, then you probably need to sit down at a pre-application meeting and discuss what your expectations would be for better ways to enforce or hold the homeowners accountable.
And I think that, I think that could be said also for maybe code enforcement. We know DEP's not going to show up and enforce anything, because they haven't.
Yeah, they, they've been, they went through about a five-year period of time where they were grossly under staff, and they onboarded actually a whole bunch of new, younger people in the last six months. And so I think we'll see in the next two years, as those people come up to speed, some of the stuff getting enforced again, if they don't quit.
That would be wonderful. I would appreciate the help, that's for sure.
But I've gotten letters and emails from a bunch of people that I've never heard of before, so I know, and I've talked to other people I know here of water quality that've got new wastewater treatment plant inspectors on board that are at their training.
Okay, excellent. And yeah, it certainly is something that enforcement from my side, DEP side, and help with the declarant as we work through, now that we, especially now that we've seen what the December and May storms can do to public as well as private roads. They need, the HOAs, we need to find some way to get some teeth in there, I think, for the developer as well as enforcement after the fact.
And I don't know off the top of my head what the HOA's power is as far as like issuing any sort of like fines or anything like that.
Some HOAs are better than others around town, yeah.
And so I don't know if that's, you put more of that burden on the HOA, but give them more power to issue more fines, I think maybe...
That, yeah, but that, the HOAs by their nature are not conducive towards enforcement actions. And then the tools that they have available to them are primarily court.
Right, yeah. Yeah, we'll have to, maybe we can brainstorm on that.
I'm sure if you've seen other subdivisions, even in other towns where they've addressed the problem better, I think that'd be something, but rather than try to reinvent the wheel with lawyers, maybe just see what works.
Yeah, lawyers don't help things.
Because we're, you know, we're unique in that with our, um, subdivisions here are all very mountainous, and so stormwater management here takes on a whole different meaning than a subdivision in a flat land.
And the prominence of overcleared lots is more noticeable.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Peter. Have a good night.
You too.
Number six, findings of facts. Pines Group LLC is crossed out, removed until the eighteenth, September eighteenth meeting. Okay?
I have nothing for locks on it. They have not, they're waiting on their DEP transfer, and they still, DEP still has not provided that, uh, locks on it yet.
Okay, for the Newry side of that project.
Correct.
Okay. By, no, uh, uh, election of officers.
So at the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, I requested you consider standing down as chairperson. I guess first of all, if you have a, did not seem opposed to that.
No, I'm not.
So is that still holding true?
Yeah, I thought, I thought Rob's seat. That's where I started, I don't know how many years ago. I never, um...
Remember to come this far?
No, that's exactly the case, yes. Yeah, um, you know, I got here because the guy on my left abruptly quit one night. A couple meetings later, the guy on my right abruptly quit, and suddenly it was me and Becky.
So before we move on to elections of officers, I guess you formally need to step down.
Okay.
If that's, you know, again, this is a voluntary action.
Okay. Never did that before. At this time, I request that I be relieved of my duties as a, as a chairman of the planning board. How's that sound?
Sounds like you stepped him down.
Okay. And, uh, seeing I've stepped down, it's your turn to step up. So...
I guess you can call...
Throw it to Robby now?
Uh, you, you can make a nomination, Gooch.
I can make a nomination to...
To be chair? Whoever wants to, first, whoever you recommend is chair.
Oh.
You're still a full member.
I'm still a full member.
Unless you, unless you're resigning from the board. Was that the...
Well, I wasn't planning on that.
And that wasn't the request either.
That wasn't the intent.
So if you've, if you've stood down as chairperson for the rest of the meeting,
Right, Bruce is chair.
Bruce is now the chairperson and takes us into elections.
I didn't come prepared.
It was on the agenda.
I know, I know, but no.
You haven't got a tie or tux.
No. Okay, as acting chair of the Newry Planning Board, I would like to open this meeting on the, well, open this, on the agenda, the, uh, elections for the planning board. Do I have any nominations for, in seats? I'd like to make the motion. Have Ted Baker.
It's called nomination.
I'd like to nominate Ted Baker for chief planning board chair.
So can I still vote?
You are a full member.
You're a full member. I'll, I'll, I'll second that.
Excellent. So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I have, well, is that the nomination?
Carrying none. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Fifteen.
Oh, alright, well, you got, you got a number, man, you know, you're, you're in. So now you can take over.
No, it's, no, you can continue on with the actions. We need a vice chair and a...
Do you have to do all of that? Oh, well, you need a secretary.
We need a secretary.
And now you don't have a secretary.
I am not going to be a secretary, I will promise you, because I...
I don't think you, because you're remaining as vice chair, right?
I, I was, I was, I was staying.
Well, we have, we have to basically go through, I think, all three, three elections.
You knew, even though that vice chair was never vacated?
Well, then I will, if that's the case, we'll, then, since the secretary position is vacant, I will nominate Gooch as the secretary of the planning board.
I refuse. I can agree with that.
Yeah, you, yeah, why not?
Okay, guess what? Bruce, we have two titles.
No, you can...
I, I, like I said, I mean, I'm not equipped to be secretary. I mean, for, for what I have, you know, from, from my capabilities and knowing what I know from me, secretary is, is not what you really want from me. So I will, I will, um, decline the offer. So...
Yeah, the secretary vacant.
Yes, it would.
No, you can, you can nobody ignore, you're wrong.
No, because you have to be a voting...
They're not, they're not full members of the board.
Can we expand, can we expand the voting members of the planning board?
Without changing the bylaws of the ordinance?
No, the ord, you gotta change the ordinance.
And that's a select board thing.
Yeah, it's a, when do they meet?
Last night.
I mean, I mean, what, we used to have, what, we had five, we used to have five, right?
Five and two.
Yeah.
But we struggled getting members.
You're right, I mean, I, yeah.
There's nobody been beating on my door to be more alternates, just so you know.
Well, if we're all supposed to step up, I'll, I'll be an alternate. But, but he can't step up unless...
Do you have another one for two of you?
Well, it's true.
Okay, so I think the way that works, Gooch, is you would have to resign the board. The two official, full-time members would talk to the two alternates, uh, move one of them up.
Well, no, we'd have to recommend to the select board.
To the select board, right, yes, and then you would have to apply to be an alternate to the select board. Do I have that right?
I think that's...
Okay. Yeah, we can't just shuffle the deck independently. We have to get select board approval.
That's not in the bylaws?
More importantly, the ordinance.
Yeah, the bylaws you guys can do on your own.
Yeah, we can do it house on the bylaws, but...
Well, we gotta change the ordinance to a lot more flexibility in the bylaws.
Well, the...
I'm, I'm just wondering, like, when Gooch steps down to be alternate, will one of you step up to be a full board member and then the secretary?
Well, Meredith's been saying much of it.
I'm listening, taking all I can.
Alright, so, to reinforce what Joel said, Gooch, you'd have to resign from the board.
Okay.
Outright. Then the town would approach either alternate to see if they are willing to step up to being appointed a full member. They don't have to. When the town can't automatically promote them. So...
Is the pay better? The pay might be better. I asked the same question.
So, so it could be that if both alternates are happy being alternates and have no desire to become a full member of the board, that the board will then operate with a vacancy until we can find a new full member of the board.
And you can only have two alternates then?
And at each meeting, would one of them be voted in as a voting member?
And one of them would, yeah, so if we had an application come before us, then one of them would have to commit to...
They could alternate. You wouldn't have to, because you do have a quorum.
Well, we do have a quorum, but ideally, you'd elevate one of them into the voting...
And that's the idea, the alternates, if one board member, voting board member is, is not there.
Right, yeah. There was one time you were out, so I had all kinds of fun.
I know, yeah, you know, you, you had a great... So, so, nobody's, nobody's, nobody's looked at Rob and said, well, Meredith is, I think it was safe to say that you would like to just to stay as an alternate.
Do we have volunteers?
Well, I guess, there was some discussion, like he came before she did.
Yeah, all of five minutes.
That's all it takes for friends.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
So, are you...
The short answer is no. I've been on the board as an alternate for all of eight months. We've been through, I guess, one and a half applications, and that first one was one heck of a mess. So I am seriously not comfortable at this time.
So, but also, if we look at the, the roles of the positions and how the work is delegated out, secretary isn't doing much. There's, well, it's in the bylaws and what's being in practice right now are, are two different things.
That's because we have wonderful Becky, to be coy towards.
And Meredith and Joel. Well, Meredith, would you be interested in becoming a voting board member? And a secretary? I'm gonna be blunt here.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, you got a couple weeks.
By the next meeting, would you?
Remember when I said I've only been here eight months?
Yeah.
Eight months and five minutes.
Right, yeah.
Seven months in.
Yeah.
Right.
Although, Meredith, you were actually attending before I even showed up the very first...
Yes, yeah.
You've actually seen more than me. I showed up in December or something.
Seconded an application, said, here you go.
Yeah, it was kind of like, what?
Living up your road in December, and you actually showed up?
Yeah, I showed up on my road in the winter. I still showed up.
The point I'd like to make is that there isn't a burden on the position, on any of these positions, other than the burden you want to place on yourself.
It's true. But what I'm trying to figure out is, can I do one of these roles? I mean, I'm still like, you know, and I'm not, I'm not there yet.
Every single one of them is a puzzle.
I've seen one, so I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm very much a pattern matter, that's what I do, so I'm not there yet to see the patterns, to understand the flow.
So, secretary vacant? Can a secretary be vacant, even though there's three members?
Well, that's...
Because it doesn't say.
Yes, it does, it doesn't say, but hey, you got three members and you got three positions, that means each one of us hits to be one.
And like, Meredith said, Gooch, you're not doing anything as secretary.
You know, I mean, and, and I, like, for me, like, my, my decline is because I shouldn't have, if I ever, if I'm ever on any board, I will not be secretary and I will not be treasurer. No, and that's just my, only because I know...
Well, in order to keep the board going, because I know there's going to be another application, because Peter said so.
It's already here.
Already here. I'll be secretary until we come up with a better, a better idea, is that allowed?
I will make the nomination that, I will nominate Gooch as secretary of the board.
And I will, I will happily second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor? One, two, three.
He's allowed for joy, you know?
Speech!
Speech, speech!
Alright.
Alright.
So am I, am I still in charge, or are you, are you taking over, what?
No, I'm the chairperson now.
Okay.
God forbid.
The only speech I'm gonna give is, my brain is not as good as it used to be.
Gooch, that, you've served a long time on the board, and we are very grateful for that. We appreciate that you're staying on, because your, your wealth of knowledge is...
And you say, yeah, you definitely have a history of wealth of knowledge, so I appreciate about this.
Do we have any, now that the election, I, you hereby move that elections are closed? Do we move on to open business? Do we have any open business to discuss? There is a, uh, Planning Board, Board of Appeals, training seminar being put on by main municipal in October, early. This one is, it's in, it's in Augusta. I went to the one last year in Augusta. It was well worth, it's well worth your time. This one is also being zoomed, so you can, you have your choice of doing one or the other. I've done both. Granted, when I did the Zoom, a bunch of water behind the ears than I am now. But I found the in-person one to be much more beneficial, but that was just me. Either or.
Did you say the date? Did you say the date?
I don't know it off the top of my head.
Okay.
But you'll, you'll mail.
I, I can't, I can't email that out. Yeah?
If it's like any of these other state things, the first time you go in, it's like, oh my God, what am I getting myself into? The second time, the work's starting to.
It's on Thursday, October 10th.
It's on October 10th.
And it runs from four thirty PM to eight thirty PM. If you go in person, you get a free dinner. If you stay at home, well, God knows if you're paying attention or not anyway, so.
What was it, in eight, October what?
October 10th. If anybody that wants to go, please let me know, or Zoom, so I can get that, your emails registered.
I can't, I can't go. I've got a prior commitment.
Let me know what you're scheduled to do next year. Have you, you've already done one? I thought so. Okay.
Depending on how we, how's our budget situation anywhere?
It's training. It'll get covered.
It'll get covered?
I don't think we spent.
I will, I'll, I'll confirm with you, but I'll, I'll, we go.
Okay, good, okay.
Again?
Yep.
Any other new businesses to discuss?
I have a question. Is there one of these for criteria of approval?
Not yet. You know, are you volunteering?
No, but I think it would be helpful.
Yes, it would, it would be helpful. And we probably, as an open discussion, for not tonight, but some other date, talk about how to expedite the review process in order to yet still cover the basis.
Right, when you need a motion, when you go.
I like that idea.
Uh, that ten point five that came out, that your, the performance, I put that together because we're basically not looking at the performance standards when reviewing an application. And while a lot of the performance standards are enforcement-based, there are several that are review-based. And so, but also, some criteria of approval double up the, the performance standard. So, what's needed is to, is to identify the performance standards that are already supporting a criteria of approval, probably move them in together so that we can not have to.
So, would, would a new one here be added with, with, with ten five in there? You know, like the.
Uh, well, it's already in there.
It's, it's not listed as ten point five.
It's not listed as ten point five.
Right, it's in the performance standards, but I mean, like, on the, on the, this is the shoreline zoning one, but the, the review tracking, we have one, two, three, and four in there. Would we put five in?
Yes.
Okay, so that would.
Or six.
What?
Well, it's not for the shoreline zone, but it's.
No, this is an example.
Yeah.
Right.
But you don't need ten point five. Because it's an internal document.
That was the intent, was that, we're still wrestling with, with that, as you saw tonight, as to how to best review that, make sure that they're in conformance.
Well, that was my next question, is when you make the motions, is it best practice to list a specific document that is the fact that supports the approval of that, or?
Yes.
I notice sometimes we do that and sometimes we don't.
Yes, that's, that's a very good observation. We need, ideally, every motion is, is supported by the one or more findings of fact.
Right, so when you get the findings of fact off, yeah, next meeting, yeah, I'm going to do it for the pines and now for Peter. There's a lot of work ahead of me. Thank you, guys.
But we're done with the pines, we're done?
Well, that, I, that means I have.
Hold your breath.
Anyway, you, you go through that, and when you see the motions for the criteria of approval itself, you'll see like the finding of fact. That should be the fact that, you know, you guys talked about, and then the motion itself.
So it doesn't have to be part of the motion that it should be discussed, or it should be part of the motion?
Point it out.
Either or, I.
So like, you know, because of this, that's why I'm moving that this is meant to. Because of this, that's why I'm moving.
Yeah, I, I think, in a, in, in an approach would be to make the motion, but before you vote, go into the discussion. And in doing the discussion, establish the findings of fact.
But it gets separated out in the finding of fact document, because in the findings of fact document, I don't detail discussions.
Right, so, that's why very often when I make a motion, I'll put the whereas in there.
I love that.
Which establishes the, the reason for the motion. So that would be the other way to do it, is you make the motion with the, with your findings of fact incorporated into the motion.
Right, that's what I was.
It requires, speaking from experience, pre-planning to do that, which means the, what we should already be doing, reviewing these applications prior to the meeting, so that we can just do that, answer any questions that we have, and then go forward to that. One other item that, aspect that I'm thinking about, and again, this is stuff for the mull over in your mind, and we can discuss about later, is I see the application review process as actually two independent reviews. One is a review for completeness. Is the application meet the completeness standards set up by our ordinance? Not quality. Has the applicant submitted something for each of those submission standards?
Everything to move forward a little bit.
And once the application is complete, then we now have to go back and look at the quality of the submission, to make sure that it is in conformance, that the applicant is meeting the standards of the ordinance. Very often, especially when I first started up, we would be jumbling both together.
Well, check has pretty much laid that out now, though, right?
It's trying, it's, yes.
It's getting a lot better.
It's moved a lot, a lot more toward, a lot better towards that. But here's, here's a twist that I would like some feedback on in future meetings. Once the application is deemed complete, there will be no further modifications to the application.
For each form, yeah.
Once, once the application is voted complete,
Yeah.
that means ten, ten one, ten two, ten three, and ten four.
Yeah.
There will be no more modifications or submissions by the applicant.
So they can't go in and say, like, oh, wait a minute, I want to.
Right.
Can you, can you give like a theoretical example?
The pre, the just finished application changed the phasing plan after the application has been deemed complete.
So we would have made them resubmit the entire thing, or just that one section of, like, ten point, whatever it was part of?
At that, well, this is what we need to work out. This is what we need to work out. I, I tend to probably be a little bit on the harder side and say, hey, you submitted this. It is in compliance with the ordinance, it's not in compliance with the ordinance. If it's not in compliance with the ordinance, the application probably will be disapproved.
And not filed complete until they.
And they have to then resubmit.
I'd rate them a really clear people when they come in.
Yes, yes, that, and that goes into a little bit of, of, offense is the best defense, so either through a preliminary meeting, which is strictly off, not, not, it's not off the record, but it's not part of the review process, explain to the applicant that their obligation to submit the, app, submit something that is pub, that, you know, they've, they've looked at the ordinance and they have, they're answering all those questions. Or, you know, or, or they say, hey, this is, like, tonight, performance guarantees didn't make any sense. So the applicant requested a waiver for that.
So where Peter came in with a pre-application meeting, right? This is where all this stuff gets hashed out and then.
Well, yes and no. Let's not, let's not, let's not take the applicant by the hand and say, here, if you do this.
No, I'm just saying, like, this, this is what we're expecting of you, if you're going to come back with your application, and this is it, because like I say, it's more or less non-formal, informal meeting of what they want to present to the board.
We don't want to go back to the liaison base.
Right, right, so that's what I'm saying, but so, so, then, then we're, we're going to tell the applicant that these are the things that you are required to have. When you commit for your application, if you don't have them, then.
And, and make it your bad, so sad. If we decide to go with this clear boundary or transition from review for completeness to review for compliance, and no, no changes after you're deemed complete, we have to make that very clear to the applicant, say, make sure that you've got your i's dotted and your t's crossed.
Right, right.
Because once it's deemed complete, you're not changing anything.
And also reiterate the importance of the optional pre-application meeting.
Yes, which is already stressed in the, in the, the.
The first thing they open on our website.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the pre-application meeting is when, is the information meeting for, for, for both parties.
A lot of times applicants will use me as their sounding board. Well, what if I come with this, and this, and this, and this, is the board going to be satisfied? I can't, a knife flat, I will not make that determination. I turn them down immediately. I will not make a judgment that I don't get a vote lock. I won't do it. I can't, they can't either.
Nor should you.
Right.
So you can advise them to say, if you're going to come with a, come to a pre-application meeting.
I don't, you know how many times I have told applicants, we have a fastidious board, we have a board that dots every i and crosses every t. You see what gets submitted. They don't listen, so. Pre, I like the preliminary meeting a lot.
Is a preliminary the same thing as a pre-application?
Yes.
Yes.
We're using the words interchangeably.
Okay, okay.
Copy and Xerox.
Copy and Xerox. Yeah, same, means the same thing.
We really need to do a process for what happens if you have a complete application. We look at it and say, yeah, you get problems. Then what? Do they have to resubmit the whole thing? We have to have a process.
We do have to think about that process.
Yeah, because that's going to be the, the thing that bites us.
But is it something that we?
It doesn't get through.
That we give these applicants a hard copy saying, this is what you, I mean, they have, they have that though, right?
Yeah, they, they have this. Everything's available.
The, the, the tough thing to, to bite and chew on here is going from a village-friendly board to a review board. In the village-friendly board, we take the applicant by the hand and say, oh, you know, this isn't quite, let me cut the mastiff, you need to, you need to improve this a little bit. Where a review board says, this is your submittal. Okay, yep, you got it? Or, sorry, that's, you're not in conformance for this reason.
Yeah, well, give them definitive, definitive answers. It, it is tough, but we are no longer little Newery. We may only have four hundred citizens that vote, huh? But, huh, we have a development footprint that's very big.
Huge.
So, I, I have a question. So when you look at it and you say, nope, you're not in compliance for this reason, is that as far as you go, or do you continue, and then you can say, for this reason, and this reason, and this reason, and that reason? So that when they do resubmit a new application, they can fix all those problems?
Yes.
And they're not.
Yes, the same thing, the same thing with the review for completeness.
Yeah.
Ideally, we have one review for completeness. Every member of the board gets a chance to identify weaknesses or questions on the completeness. And the applicant walks out with a list, a complete list of, if, if they check out each of these items, they will have a complete, not necessarily an approved, but a complete application. And we can then move on to, does the application conform with the ordinance?
Things to think about.
So, so, for instance, hypothetically, the applicant comes in and has a phasing plan and says, phase two through five will be as economic conditions exist. Or permit, I should say.
Permit.
As economic conditions permit. Well, the ordinance says you can't have an open-ended phasing plan. The ordinance is quite specific, it says phasing plans must have a start and an end. So, in the review, in the review process, phasing plan, oh, you've got a phasing plan, okay, check off.
In the review for completeness.
In the review for complete. In the review for compliance, that's when you say, we're sorry, your phasing plan does not meet the standards of the ordinance. Therefore, we cannot approve your, your application. Tough, that's, that's a tough one. Before we go down that way, we might make sure that that's what we want to be doing.
But in the pre-application meeting, they were to ask about their phasing plan and answer them?
We would, we would, in, in general standards.
Tell them what the standard is.
What, hey, the phasing plan has to be defined. And, and, uh, if, if it covers required improvements, or if there are required improvements that run through the entire development, then a phasing plan should address the portion of the required improvements that will be included in that phasing plan to, to avoid, uh, a built-out development, yet required improvements haven't been completed.
Like no underground property. Like, okay, how do you settle that law?
The same thing with the, uh, so, the phasing plan probably should be moved up in the, in the checkoff list, so that it's discussed before the application's deemed complete.
The checkoff list even actually talk about.
No, it does not, because it's not a, it's not a submission requirement.
Right, because not.
So, so there are, there are things that are, are.
We can go to legal size paper on this.
Yes, we can. Type it from what I can type.
If you do this, follow this.
Either legal side, double-sided paper.
There's enough seventy-year-olds here. You don't go there when you're smaller.
Hey, fifty-four. I'd put lots of them for that.
It's all, it's all of us. I have, I have a lot of problems now with, with small.
So, so, without prolonging this discussion further now, please think about some ideas here. And is there merit to having a, a strong border between application complete and application in compliance?
Or do we think, yeah, okay.
Well, I mean, but if, but if we can do that, then I think it, it will not drag these things out.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I, and I, I'm guilty. I, I had done my share of dragging out these meetings. And I don't, I go home feeling like a heel because I've done it.
One of my previous towns required the prelim meeting, automatic.
Well, last one was another question. Can you require it?
Wait, wait.
That's why we couldn't.
Well.
Someone requires her certain.
That would have, anyway, would be a change to the ordinance.
And there's nothing that townspeople love more than us voting on ordinances every year at the town meeting.
The last, the last town meeting was a rather anomaly.
Pretty well-known.
Yeah.
So, can I, um, just to pull you back completely? And because I've been working away at the, the findings of facts, because I, if I didn't, I'd be in the river just. So, when, because I know that I have it on here about allowing the applicant to explain their submission. I just want to emphasize the submissions at each meeting, because what I'm finding with the findings of facts is what I go through. I'm finding, the findings of facts, is what I go through and I'm tracking the documentation that was submitted then. You'll see on this, I tried to put like, that was clean, it was discussed or something. So if you wanna, if you see a minute and hear it, you'll see some of them, it's just it was not, because things were submitted and not even mentioned on the recorder.
Okay, so, so you're saying new things were, additional items were submitted?
Yeah, so whether it was like, a, a letter that was put here in our thing?
Yeah, I know exactly.
Or just Joel copying things to put, you know, in front of us? Like, I, I receive things and I, you know, I figure out which application to go to. If it doesn't go to an application, it doesn't really matter. But if it pertains to an application, so a lot of times, I'll put the date of the meeting that I got it, and it wasn't talked about, but I get the impression that it's gonna be talked about at the next meeting, but then it's not talked about at that meeting either. It's like, oh. And then it still goes to file, and it's still recorded on there, it's just never talked about on the recorder.
So, so at the start of...
Whenever the applicant starts their topic.
Yeah, is, at the, when we go to that line of business?
Yeah.
Is to identify any new submissions?
Yeah, whatever's...
Correspondence, et cetera, that has, that has come in?
For that...
Since the last meeting.
Application, since the last application, yes.
And then also give the applicant a chance to...
Right, to spell upon it or whatever, you know, just pay up with it, stuff a little bit if they want, but, yeah.
So, so besides the, the flow of a review that we talked about, and the application complete versus application in compliance discussion, the other discussion that I would like to get feedback from is public participation during the review process.
Right, that's usually not...
Well, we, you know, we, we've had a strict policy, and I'm not saying I don't wanna have a strict policy, but we've also had the situation where we've had multiple people representing an applicant, an application, and which then gets, perhaps interferes a little bit with the review process.
So if they, if it, you know, if it is the applicant, or the, the applicant has higher agents, then it should be just the one, commercial, to the public hearing. Unless it's a public hearing, then...
Well, if it's a public hearing, then...
Right, that's...
Well, yes, yes and no, that's it, so that's a whole separate baby one.
Right, when they're called upon, they can talk, they just can't talk.
All right, right.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hold it.
Oh?
About the next meeting.
Well, it's hardly adjourned, is it?
No, that's...
Not a great list.
I don't know, not on your agenda. Have you scheduled the next meeting?
The next meeting is?
September...
18th.
18th.
And we do have business on...
We do. I do have hard copies, if you guys would like to take the next applicant, application submission with you, or I can...
Now, the next meeting is...
Don't make it easier.
If we're referring to Sunday River, that is a pre-application.
Correct, do you want to take it with you?
So be, be aware that it's just a pre-application.
Yeah, yeah.
This is for the other project that they're doing.
They, yeah, they did submit plenty of copies. Can't talk about it, whatever it is that's down here, so. Right, yeah, but, so I can't hand out hard copies if anybody would like to take them? Take the copies home and go through them. Okay? You can't discuss this.
So the next trip to the mailbox.
The next meeting is September 18th, and we do have new business at that meeting. Is there anything else for the agenda for the next meeting? Thank you.
Uh, no, well, there'll be finding of facts, which we have to be right off.
Finding of fact, okay.
Can you go, man? Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, now may I entertain a motion to adjourn?
You may. You may. I'll second.
No, I need the motion first.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the September 4th Planning Board meeting. I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, that we adjourned the September 4th Planning Board, I'll leave it there.
One, two, three. You adjourn, thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
It's on the future meeting, like to cover which things have to be announced.
Thanks for recording us, folks. Thanks for recording us.
You're welcome.
It's been a while. Let the public see all the exciting things happening.
I know it is, yeah.